All right, so there's kinda...
They were blowing on their books today.
Yeah, oh my gosh, yeah, of course, of course. Okay, and then when he calls you up, if you, are you the kid, are you the winner? Great job, but when he calls you up, you're gonna go stand on that dot right there, okay? And then, and then you'll get your, you'll get your picture and stuff, sound good? Perfect, okay.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our December Avery Board Event Meeting, and we appreciate you participating here, those who are here with us and those who are online. I'd like to begin by calling to order and reading our ethics statement, which states, "Board members are reminded that it is our duty to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of this board. Does any member of the board know of any conflict of interest or any appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before us at this meeting? If so, please state them for the record. If during the course of the meeting you become aware of an actual or apparent conflict of interest, please bring the matter to the attention of the Chair. It will then be your duty to abstain from participating in discussion on the matter and from voting on the matter." Careful, would you do our case for...
Sure. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you, Lord. We give you thanks and we ask God that you'd be with us today, that you would help us to have wisdom as we make decisions. Lord, that you would be with our county, with our families, with our children, Lord, and most of all, that you would help us to do your will. Lord, we praise you and we love you and we give you all the glory and thanks for anything in our lives. In Jesus' precious name, we pray.
Amen.
Could I have a motion for approval?
No, it's, it's a pledge of allegiance, isn't it?
I thought you were going over there and I was waiting there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a motion for approval of tonight's open and closed agendas?
I do have one request for a change on the agenda.
Oh, yes.
Yes, sir. I would like to move Mr. Rob Johnson and our auditors up on the agenda, right after the regular monthly Board of Education meeting ends.
Okay.
Or that board announcement for the next four minutes. So it'd be under A1, and it would be A number two and A number three.
Could I have a motion for approval of the agenda amendment?
I recommend we have to move, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
She's muted now.
All right. Could I have a motion for approval of the November 5th and November 10th open and closed minutes?
Some moved.
Thank you, Jane, second. Thank you, Ruth. Any discussion? All in favor? Pat still on with us?
Are you muted, Pat?
Pat? I'm muted.
Ms. Pat Edwards is joining us by, she is quarantined, so she is joining us by Zoom tonight, so we'd like to go ahead and do our upfront session and our, we have our favorite part to recognize our students and our Christmas card winners tonight. We have some great ones.
That's right. Okay. Each year, the Avery County School System has our students, their outgrades K through 12, present artwork for consideration to go on our district Christmas card. So this year was a collage of various artwork from across the district, and we have some of our outstanding artists with us tonight to be recognized because their art has contributed to our Christmas card that will be sent to all school districts across the state of North Carolina, local businesses, and other various private sectors throughout the county and the state. So with us today, we should have Frankie McKinney. Where is Frankie McKinney? Okay, Frank couldn't be here, but Frankie is a third, Frankie is the winner, a third grade Newland Elementary student, so we'll recognize Frankie in her absence or his absence. Okay, so beautiful artwork. And I forgot to say that each one of these winners will get a CD, is that right, Stacey?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So y'all can make your own digital Christmas cards and send it to your families.
That's right. And next, we have the second grade winner at Benner Oak Elementary School is Ezra Jones. Ezra, congratulations, congratulations, well, good job. Come up here. Hold your picture up.
Yeah, excellent.
Congratulations. Next, we have Ava Valdez, fifth grade winner at Benner Oak Elementary School. Good job, great. Excellent job, all right. Congratulations. And next, each year, the board selects a winner too, so this year, its board selection was Faith. I'm gonna mess this lesson up. Faith Huddling, is that right? Faith is not here, she's seventh grader at Cranberry Middle School, so we can clap for her and her actions. We'll make sure she gets this and the CD. All right, and our overall winner this year is a fifth grader at Benner Oak Elementary School, Peola Quintero. She also gets a $50 gift card. And congratulations to all the parents that are here, and I thank you for supporting your children and for being a part of their education.
If y'all wanna look towards Luke, so that one's for the paper.
Do we want all winners to come up for a picture?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on back up here, winners.
This is like paparazzi here.
Celebrities, come on in.
All right, thank you.
And thank you once again.
Who talked to the draw, Ezra, your mom or your dad?
His mom.
It's his grandma, she's an artist.
Well, we're proud of you.
Thank you very much.
All of you, you all.
You're screwed over, you're blocking the whole one.
Thank you all. Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
So we're ready for Mr. Johnson and Mr. Watson, correct?
Rob's here, so is our auditor, she's not in.
My favorite person here, what do you mean? We'll do this thing page by page today. What do you mean? No, I'm just teasing.
Nerdo or...
I know.
Robin in my, yeah.
Never drink how much I'd like it.
No, we, we are glad you do.
It's okay, there's nothing in there, I have questions, I have one little question I'd like to...
Rob, we've moved you up to the batter's box here, so you wouldn't have to hang around so long. Thank you for being here.
It's right welcome.
Thank you, it's great.
Stand there and go for it.
No, it's wonderful to be here. Dr. Bridman, Chairman, Vice Chair, and members of the board. I was over at Walksight this afternoon, and I'm glad to report, there's finally some good progress. Really looking forward to y'all's tour. Lots happened in the last couple of weeks, it's been very encouraging. You know, the city building is one unit, really envisioned, it's so refreshing, it's been so long just scattering in pieces, but last bit, we're actually working on the day, proper, they have their procedures right, tinning, the basement, they keep it warm enough, and so the front wall's load-bearing, and the back wall's load-bearing, and then the two Carter walls are load-bearing. Last piece they're doing, as we speak, last few courses of the front, no, excuse me, the back Carter wall, the grand eyes, joy to the eyes, all those remaining trusses are horizontal landing in place, ready to be tilted up, so they'll finish that tinning, tilt those trusses in place, secure them, put the decking on, so at that point, we will be sounding trumpets that all is under roof. But I think the timing of the visit on Thursday's gonna be really good. Purposeful visit, I walked myself through, thinking that, you know, we want to show you whatever you want. I thought if we'd start at the front door, proceed like you're going to school, the administration suite, go up to the mid-level like there's a bin at the school, and then obviously look at all the academic degrees, so really was an encouraging visit today. The other positive note is, don't forget to note, Jack Cato, the younger project manager, Dave Olson, the superintendent, Mike Love has been a really good person with Branch to support the two of them. They've recently added, Danny Klutz is his name, Assistant Superintendent, helping Dave, so again, that's another positive aspect. Again, really looking forward to Thursday, raised weather, said it's gonna be 50 degrees and blue skies.
I was gonna say, 19 degree weather is the biggest motivator to get that thing.
The wind was brutal in the last, and y'all had to...
Thanks, Rob, and I've gone by a few times, just not in it, but just looking at it, and there has been a lot of good progress. November was kind to us.
Yeah.
And we appreciate the work that you all are doing, because it is really taking shape now.
And rightfully so, I was stressed in the last progress meeting that, okay guys, you got December, you miss this Wednesday, it's gonna go from bad, bad, bad to worse, worse, worse.
We look forward to Thursday, 3 o'clock, County Commissioners and Board.
Nice.
The Administration. We have helmets here, so we'll look forward to seeing you there.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you, Rob, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
We'll see you Thursday. Next, we have Mr. Mike White, our auditor, and we appreciate you being here, thank you for coming, I'm a chilly evening.
Good evening, pleased to be here. Is it all right to leave this on or take off?
Empty.
I might speak easier that way. Chairman, Green Members of the Board, Dr. Bridman, pleased to be here to present the audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2020. I'll tell you, the audit report is, is not a very, not a very exciting report this year, but that's a good thing when an auditor is presenting an audit, it's a very good, clean audit for everyone. I think, does each of you have a copy of the statements in front of you?
Yes.
I'm gonna sort of just get the highlights, each year, it gets, the statements get bigger and bigger, it's 75 pages now, I'm not gonna go over each of those pages while we're doing my review. But, and really, I think y'all know, if you've got any questions during the presentation, just stop me when I answer any questions you have. The main thing is gonna be on page one. This is the, really, the opinion letter that we issue on the overall financial statements. And I'm pleased to report that we issued an unmodified opinion, and that's really commonly referred to as a clean audit report. That's the highest level of assurance that we can give on a set of financial statements as your auditors. When we say unmodified, I want to make sure you know what that means. It means that we did not run into anything during the performance of our testing that would cause us to say it was, have to modify the report where everything was in accordance with the accounting standards, except for this one modification, so no items noted such as that. Then, really, the next thing I'm gonna focus on is gonna be looking at your fund financial statements, and everyone always on the school, we wanna go over the fund balance with the districts. And what I'm gonna do is turn over to page 15, and I'll give y'all time to find that. And the type says, it's sort of small on this, so I apologize for that, but the main thing you're gonna probably look at is gonna be your fund balance and your general fund, and that's the leftmost fund, and the general fund is gonna be the monies that primarily come in from Avery County, that's, that's where the bulk of it's gonna come from. And if you look down at the bottom, about the fourth line from the, from the bottom, you're gonna see that the district added 340,000, 346,000, 327,000 fund balance this year. And that's really, I think y'all know, all I really do is audit school boards throughout the state, and this is really what we would like to see for a district this size this year. With the coronavirus coming in, it really disrupted everything, you got a little bit extra funding in year 20 from the federal government, but mainly what we're seeing is, is that in the last quarter of the year, you had less like utilities, less substitute costs, things like that, and now I think in addition, the district had tried to manage their fund balance very well. So to be honest, this is exactly what we would sort of recommend to see, that type of an increase in year 20. Then going forward, we would really recommend that you try to add some fund balance this year too, because you're getting extra coronavirus monies and whatnot on that. The problem that we see, and we're warning all of our districts, is I know that your ADN is down this year from what it was last year. The state is essentially holding you harmless this year, they're gonna keep your funding constant. No one can really be sure what's gonna happen in year 22 or forward, so that's what we're telling folks to really try their best, if you can, to grow that fund balance a little bit, mainly because there's so much uncertainty going forward. You don't know what those next few years hold for you, and then maybe be in a better situation at that point, if you can. Obviously, when it's y'all decision, you have to address the immediate needs also, if there's additional needs due to virus. But does anyone have any questions on that? Because that normally is what most folks would look at pretty heavily. And the next thing I wanted to point out, again, trying to keep it short, but we talked a little bit about the benefit burden and obligations that you have to pay each year. Last year, I'm gonna focus on that again a little bit this year. Turn over to page 53, if you do not mind. Because this is another thing to me that really, it impacts all the school districts throughout the state. And again, page 53 is what we're looking at. This information is gonna have seven years worth of data, and these are state mandated contributions that Avery County Schools has had to make into the state's retirement system, and these contributions are just for future, oh, I told you the wrong thing, it's really close, let me just, okay, that is, that is right. So this is the contribution, excuse me, I'm sorry, there's one for OPEB, the Post-Appointed Healthcare, and then one for Retirement. So this is just for your retirement checks. But if you look on 2014, you're gonna see that the contributions were 1.155 million, going back to 2014. If you go up here and look on, in the top row, years 2020, you're gonna see that same contribution was 1.8 million dollars. So you went up from 1.15 to 1.80 million, as mandated by the state, your head count went down. I didn't include that issue, but your number of employees did go down, I think we talked about it last year, the state doesn't ask for your opinion on voting for these rates, the state mandates it, you do that. This year, going into 2021, the overall retirement rate went up two percentage points, roughly 19.5 to 21.5. So that would tell you it's roughly a 10% increase, so I'm gonna guess that this 1.8 number is closer to 2 million next year. And the state covers the majority of it, maybe 60 to 70%, but if you have a locally-paid employee, a federally-paid employee, or a state-paid employee that's out of a dollar lock, about your position, a lot goes like teachers, that has to come out of your pocket essentially, so either it's additional fundings that you get from some form or fashion Avery County, or it comes out of your fund balance. So that's just another thing that I'm warning all of our districts, make sure that you keep that, another level of uncertainty. I certainly do not expect to see the retirement, the mandated, state mandated retirement rates to go down, and if anybody's gonna bet, you're gonna bet that that keeps going up. And that really ties into your fund balance, and so we'll talk about earlier on that. Then the last thing that I'm gonna give y'all, if you don't have any questions, is the compliance section, and that starts over on page 62 of the report. And really on that, you're gonna find three opinion letters from us as your independent auditors, starting on that page 62. One is on compliance and internal control aspects of the overall district as a whole, one specifically the state money, one specifically the federal money that the district receives. On all three of those items, it's an unmodified report, a clean audit report, there are no issues whatsoever noted on that. Really, I do wanna take time to say, obviously, we all know everything's changed this year due to the virus and whatnot, and the meeting areas, meeting and whatnot. In the end, the audit approach had to change also. We couldn't come in and just completely look at all documents in one fell swoop, like we like to, one before year-end, one after year-end, the process changed. Just wanted to thank everyone in management, at the schools, the Central Act, the County Department, Child Nutrition Program, everyone was very helpful for us. And I said, no one likes change, we gotta do things a little bit different, transmit more data electronically, things like that. We still, you know, able to issue the audit report on time, and the point is, I guess, is, but that did take work from people at the staff, so we are very appreciative of that.
Well, Michael, we appreciate your thoroughness here in the good report, we appreciate you working with our folks so, so well too.
All this, sir.
Does anybody have any questions for mine?
The phone numbers in the audit report on all the opinion letters, so really, we work for the board, if y'all have any questions for us, at any time, feel free to use a call.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hope you have a Merry Christmas.
Oh, you too.
So we'll go on to Dr. Bridman's superintendent report?
Sure. Yesterday was Pearl Harbor Day, and Pearl Harbor Day is observed annually in the United States on December 7th to remember and honor the 2,403 Americans who were killed in the Japanese surprise attack on Pearl Harbor in Hawaii on December 7th, 1941, which led to the United States declaring war on Japan the next day, and thus entering World War II. Christmas break is upon us once again, and next Friday, December 18th, is an early dismissal as we enter our much-needed Christmas break and include first semester. We have been very, this semester has been very fast, but a very interesting semester, one like never before. As this board is aware, we have been proactively responding to the COVID-19 pandemic since August 17th. We have been very fortunate to maintain in-class instruction for the Avery County School System. Hopefully during the coming weeks, we'll see a decline in the number of positive cases throughout our county and state. We encourage everyone to wash their hands frequently, wear face coverings, and remain safe distance from others, including family, while avoiding large crowds over the upcoming holiday break. We wish all of our staff, students, and families a very safe and relaxing Christmas break. School will resume on Monday, January 4th, with a required teacher work day, and students will return on Tuesday, January 5th, for the first day of instruction for the second semester, so we wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Dr. Bridman.
Yes, sir.
Let's see, next, we'll be going to our remote learning. We'll go to our remote learning update, we have with us our principals Ricky Ward, Jamie Johnson, and Whitney Vance, thank you all for being here.
Do you want Mr. Ward to go first?
Do you do the short straw?
We decided Whitney will go first. Oh, okay.
Throwing you under the bus, Whitney.
Well, we, just in the last week or so, we started a new schedule. We had saw that, especially first thing, more than our students just were not out of bed for the most part, so we pushed everything back a little bit, so our schedule now starts at 10:00, and we just go by block. So, so we have first block from 10:00 to 11:00, second, 11:00 to 12:00, then we left a little lunch break in there, and then third, 1:00 to 2:00, and then fourth, 2:00 to 3:00. And so far, we have saw much better participation with that. And I've even had a couple of kids write me and say, thank you so much, this works out much better for me, and so I think that's gonna help us with getting more students involved. And basically, we, on a remote day, we don't require a Zoom necessarily every day, because we do different types of instruction. So we have a lot of teachers that do videos, especially for math, that seems to be a really good way to do that, is they put the assignments out, and they usually give it to the kids about two weeks out, so they have it in their hands, so if they hear, you know, we're gonna be out of school for three days, they've already got it. So they keep that in their hands for a good, you know, week or so ahead of time, and then they have videos for all of those, so the kids can get on and basically watch that as many times as they need to, and then during that time, they can contact their teacher and they're available for that questions or anything that needs to happen during that scheduled time. Many teachers are Zooming during that time, many teachers are, are doing other types of instruction as well, so we're trying to do what, what works for the student in the class for that particular situation. Zoom, as I said, has not been, we've had many that there's been one kid, you know, which that's one, you know, so we try to do what we can, but that, like I said, that is looking a little bit up now, so I think we're gonna have a little better participation with that, so.
Well, I've, if you, if you, a teacher Zooms and only one kid comes in, is the rest of the class absent, but how does that work?
Not necessarily, because we know that they do have some things that can cause that. For example, April Chevron, we were really talking about, well, what, what are the issues that our students are facing? So she had every kid write, said, don't put your name on it, but what are, what's keeping you from being able to do remote learning as well as you would like and we would like? Many different things from, I have to get up and make sure that my younger siblings have breakfast, so that they're ready to Zoom at their scheduled time, and then, you know, so they're, they're having to be parents in a lot of situations, some that say they have to work, which we know, you know, we don't encourage that. So we take all of our Zooms, and many of them watch them later, is what we're seeing. But it's, it's, we've had a lot of those, especially early in the morning with them getting on, so we don't necessarily count absent if they're completing their assignments and they're contacting the teacher. So if there's some type of a, could be phone call, email, whatever works for the situation, then we don't count them absent, and if they just aren't there, or they don't turn anything in, that's when they would be absent.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pose a question for you, so if, if we continue to see the numbers of COVID increase, and if we were to have to go for an extended period of time on remote learning again, like, like we do before Thanksgiving, or we had to do quarantine the high school because of the exposure, feel better about the teachers being more prepared now to expedite those plans and it'd be meaningful instruction.
Yes, I think we get better each time we've, we've done it, we've learned from things that didn't go well. It's still, it is a struggle, I mean, anytime that they're not there with us, it is, it is much harder, but I think we're getting, the kids are getting better at it, our teachers are getting better at it, so I think we're learning a lot from continuing to do it.
What about PE and art and those classes, what about, are the PE teachers Zooming? What are they doing?
Some are Zooming, typically, they have a, it's basically a, a schedule of what they give them, and it's, I want you to do these things, so it may be 20 push-ups, you know, some kind of physical activity, and they have to keep a journal that they have done those things on those days and then turn that in.
So what does that teacher do then on remote days?
A lot of times those teachers, and again, they're, they, some of them do offer Zooms, and again, those have not been extremely well attended, so most of the time, those teachers would be working on contacting the kids that they need to contact, working on lesson plans, doing different things, but it is hard, that's, that is a hard one. You know, what, what are they gonna do when they don't have kids that are really engaged? So that's, that's one of the struggles. It really is.
So how are you addressing that, if it's one of the struggles, I'm sorry?
No, that's, that's a question. We've, we've had a lot of conversation, I met with every teacher in the last week, we met by departments, and we talked about what's working, what's not, what can we do better? So it's, and those conversations were different in each department because they're so different. But in the electives, what they were saying a lot was, our students just, we're always gonna be last, you know, they're gonna make sure they get their math done first, they're gonna make sure they get the others done first. So they're saying, we're trying to be there as a resource, what do you need, those types of things, but the, it is harder for them in a lot of situations. Look at Nick Daniels, who goes, we're working. That's extremely hard to do, but he does a really good job with it. They, they have a lot of activities that they do, he's constantly talking to... They have a lot of activities that they do, he's constantly talking to them. So he's, to me, is an example of that it can work. And being as good a situation as it can, it's definitely not like being there, but it hasn't went well. Mr. Michael, who does drafting, he Zooms every day, and they have great conversation. But there's a lot they can't do because they don't have the computer. He uses a different computer program that's based off desktops. So he's had to adjust a lot to be able to say, what can I do with what they have? So it definitely looks different, but they're being very creative in what they're doing. I know math has been one that a lot of people are really worried about math. The math teachers are really doing a great job with making sure that they have videos for all of that, and the kids can get to it. And I know Sherman Andrews is answering emails till eleven o'clock about every night, you know, and he can show you that. So those things are reaching out and they're asking a lot of questions. It's just not necessarily during that schedule. So... But we're definitely trying to do better with electives. That is a... It is a different world than the other classes.
I'd like to say I had the opportunity to watch a kid Zoom on math this week from the high school, and I was very impressed with the step-by-step instruction that was given. Actually, it was not a... It was a tape. But I was very, very impressed with the fact that if she needed something, she could go back and pick it up, maybe better than I could have in place.
The tape really, for math especially, seems to be the best approach. And it's different for different... So science seems to do better with Zoom. They do a lot of Zoom, because they got to have that time to talk through things. So that's why we haven't said it has to be one form. We're trying to say what works for the students and the teacher for that particular situation.
Well, do you think, like, on these days where it's... What we used to would have a snow day? Where kids would be skiing or whatever? Are kids and teachers both? Like, I guess I've got some concerns about, we're not having basketball practice during instructional time and those kind of things. I mean, this is supposed to be a day of instruction that we're telling the state of North Carolina it's a day of instruction.
We are trying our best. We have had to, like today, we had basketball practice, or it was tryouts. And what we ran into there was, there was nowhere else to put tryouts. And we have to get that team picked so that we can move forward. Because we're doing... Of course, we've never done seasons overlapping each other, but they are now. So we have a very limited gym schedule, and so we felt like we had to get that basketball tryout done. That's not going to be an occurrence that keeps going, but we had to in that situation. So it did overlap some. And what we had to do was say, if the kid's missing that class, it was that expectation that they had to get with the teacher and say, what do I need to do? What's the video I need to watch? You know, so there was... There was expectation on the kid that if I'm going to miss a class, I have to do this. So that, again, that's not going to be an ongoing thing. We've run into that a little bit with Robert Zed as well, because he's so far behind. He was, I think, four classes behind. So that, if you look at that, that goes over a four-month period. So he's had to do some on Wednesdays, too. So we've just had to say, if you miss that class, it's your responsibility, again, to talk with that teacher and find out what you need to do. But we're trying to limit that as best we can.
So first kickoff football season is... Which snowstorm are we going to be in?
We pick one, because it's going to be everywhere.
We've got to evacuate from the Wisconsin high school association.
Sports have went well so far. They're playing volleyball right now, and we're doing the best we can to make sure everybody is safe and that we're following all the protocols, because there are many.
And speaking of sports and entry and broadcasting, I know you guys have partnered with a private company to give viewers outside access for a subscription of ten dollars per year, per season, per month?
It's ten dollars per month.
Ten dollars per month.
That's unlimited. You can watch every game we have during that month and every game that's on there. So you can watch Mount Heritage if they have a game, you can watch California. I think, you know, you can watch whatever, but it's ten dollars per month. That came with... When we did it, we paid twenty-five-hundred dollars. That was two cameras, which are extremely expensive. These are really nice cameras, and two computer systems that went with it. So they cost way beyond what we paid for. And they work really well. If you haven't saw it, it is automatic. The camera follows the ball. So when you're watching volleyball, it turns... It's doing that itself. Nobody's doing that. It follows the ball, and it follows herd mentality like for basketball and football. So if a group runs, it follows that. So it really looks good. And that's through the National Federation, so it's very good.
The High School Athletic Association kind of hold us to that vendor or to that process?
They have a certain... A few that they will work with, and that's the main one. And where you run into the problem, especially during playoffs, you have to use one of them for playoff games. You cannot use Facebook, you cannot... Because the Athletic Association owns the rights to those games. So you can get fined very much for showing those games in the way you're not supposed to.
If there were to be some grandparents or something that needed help to pay for that or whatever, I'm sure we could find...
We could definitely find that if somebody needed support with that. That would not be a problem. I've already talked to the counselor about that, and they said they're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You didn't make me brought gifts, did you?
I did. Do you want everybody to have one?
Well, he's going to keep myself.
I think we'll give Miss Pat one, too.
She's new to them.
Next, Jamie?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Sure. I'll ask you that, too. Sorry, doesn't have that beforehand, but there's our schedules that we're using on our remote learning days. But before I did that, I just want to thank you all for opting to be at Cranbury. Just very pleased with how things have gone in the short amount of time I've been there. I came in the week before Thanksgiving. Of course, we missed Friday, Monday, Tuesday. So I think I've been there about four days. But no, it's been great. It's been a very experienced, great people there.
Thank you for taking that on, Jamie. We appreciate you.
Sure. I'm very... Appreciate the opportunity. As you look at the scheduling, as you take some time to go through that, you'll see the emphasis is really twofold at least. The first part is certainly to provide quality direct instruction to our students in sixth, seventh, eighth grade. We accomplish that in a variety of ways, which I'll talk about in just a moment. But also, another part of it, that a lot of time is allotted for, is making sure we're in... We stay in constant contact with our students and stay aware of their needs, what they need moving forward. If there's things that they're lacking to advance their education, we're aware of those things. There's a lot of time allotted to that, and we think it's valuable. It's time well spent to be in touch with what these students are needing. But I want to brag on the staff, not just at Cranbury, but every school, but certainly Cranbury. They've been doing a wonderful job putting together instruction, all kinds of different direct instruction, and Ricky referred to those things, as far as Zooming or flipped classroom, where there's those videos that he referred to that are very effective, or other things through Haku at middle school and high school that have been really effective. They're really producing some great content, and I'm really pleased with what they're doing. A couple of things just to highlight, a few examples. Our science and social studies teachers have done a great job of recording those videos, those explanations of concepts or a topic. And what that does for us is that flipped classroom model is about preparing students while they're at home or while they're away from the face-to-face. When they do come back to face-to-face, they've got that knowledge base, that prior knowledge already there, and they can move forward with the classroom lessons or a lab or something like that. In our science and social studies classes, we've seen that be very effective. Our math classes, and as Catherine referred to that a little bit, is the great thing there, one thing that's really effective, is recording how to go through a problem. And the great thing there, that's great to hear that explanation. And they could send a recording of someone. There's a great resource called Khan Academy, which has a lot of good information. But to hear your teacher's voice going through that process is pretty powerful, and it just connects you a little bit more. And the great thing about that is, you know, if you brought me, if you don't get it the first time, you can pause, you can rewind, and go back and get it. And parents have that opportunity to understand, and maybe even understand a little better, like you were saying. Those concepts that may be hard to catch on, because math has changed a whole lot. Middle school math is probably what high school math was when I was in high school. Those lessons, those recorded lessons are really effective, and I think that's helped us be a little bit more personal. Our language arts teachers are doing a wonderful job of recording them reading novels or them having a Zoom session and having a class discussion about a novel. So we're using Zoom. You'll see in each of the schedules that there are times for virtual meetings, whether it's Zoom. We use Zoom mostly, but there's a lot of time allotted for that, and it's specific to grade levels. And even our encore teachers, and we were talking about encore and how we use those extras, those specials now. They are doing Zoom sessions, and they have lessons on Haku. They are doing those things. But also, a good thing to do with them is to help our classroom teacher, our core teachers contact, make those phone calls, make those extra contacts that we want to stay up to date with what our students are about and if they're struggling in any areas. And answer our parent questions as well. We're available for those contacts through email. And as you get into middle school and high school, they are more adept at emailing those questions. Elementary is a different story, but they're doing a great job, and it's just really been just sincerely impressive to me coming in how well they had already been using Haku and using those recordings and using the face-to-face and combining all of that together and doing a great job of providing excellent instruction and also that connection with our students. That's what we're... We want to stay true to. Any questions or anything about that?
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Now, it's not... Thank you so much for the opportunity to be at Riverside. It has been a wonderful transition. I, like Jamie said, I've not got to see the students a whole lot, but we've got to really build those relationships in the short time that I've been there. And we kind of took off running. As soon as I got there, we went through the remote learning plan. A lot of that was for my sake as well, just so I knew exactly what was stated in the plan. So we discussed that as a staff, and then we came up with a brief schedule. Everybody's schedule is kind of set at the same times, and we decided we all wanted to do reading instruction here one time, math instruction here one time. And then within that, the teachers took those timeframes and chunked it up however they felt would best meet their needs in their grade level. So you'll see on the back of that, those are the schedules that we posted on our website. So we went ahead and updated the website, made a grade level page for each class, and we've linked their Haku pages. So now all the teachers have a Haku page pre-K through fifth, actually. We decided as a school, we wanted to be a little more uniform, and so that they're not running Google Classroom for K-one and then transitioning to Haku in second, since they're really just using it as a website portal anyway to access their links and videos and resources. So our pre-K, Kinder, and first work with Nancy Carter to create like a website where they'll have pre-uploaded videos and activities and a video describing the packet that's coming home. So all the kids are still receiving the packet as well as they getting access online. Then second, their fifth grade will log into Haku, and they have the option to submit assignments, most of which are not able to because of connectivity on our end of the county. However, we just started Zoom sessions last week. So our teachers were in training two full days with Nancy building these pages and kind of picking her brain. And so we set up reminder accounts, and so all the teachers are now able to directly text message their parents and give them those reminder messages about Zoom meetings. And that's worked really well for us, especially with these snow days coming up. We can just send a message really quickly. Everyone gets it, and it can be by student, individual student, or whole class. So Zooms today, for example, in fifth grade, we had eight attend a Zoom session, which is kind of unheard of for them. Like, I think that Ms. Bebe was very shocked just because of the lack of connectivity. Now, in third grade is a whole different ballgame. We had two out of ten attend. But we already knew going in, they had more connectivity issues and just lack of reliable internet. Some of the challenges that we've noticed on the remote learning days is a lot of who the kids are being supervised by. So they may typically on a Wednesday be with parents, but then on a remote snow day, they may be with grandparents or cousins or somebody. So we never really know for sure who's going to have internet depending on where they're at. So the... But the option is available. So everybody has the same work. Whatever work they're doing in the packet is what's uploaded on their Haku pages as well as those informational videos that supplement it. So this just outlines on the front page, it kind of tells you how many Zooms each grade level is doing. And they have broken those up based on content. So like, they may have a whole group reading Zoom, and then they may split into two breakout sessions based on ability level to meet the needs of their students better. We have three tutors in our building who are in all essence teachers assistants, and they're phenomenal. And they are paired up with two grade levels. So like, we have one tutor who works with Kinder in fifth. And so they've divided up hours. And on those remote days, they are reaching out to the students who don't have internet, and they're contacting them one-on-one or small group either by phone or if they can access a Google Meet or something of that nature, then they'll do that. But it's typically a phone call if they're not able to attend the Zoom sessions. So that's a little bit what's going on. Our specials, we just have PE right now at Riverside. We do have an art and music teacher, but she's used a supplemental help due to scheduling in third grade. But she went ahead and made an art and music Haku page, and Mr. Bo made a PE page, and they're pre-loading videos on there that the kids can access. And there's a section built into their schedule where they can choose. They have an option to do PE on one day, art and music on one day, PE, and then they get a free choice on one day so that they can pick which encore special they want to choose from. So that's kind of adjusted Riverside. Do you have any questions?
How many do you say do not have good reception down there? What percentage would you say?
And when you say good internet, you mean not reliable?
I mean one where I could get in touch with you and actually Zoom with you.
I would say you're looking at less than fifty percent have reliable internet. I estimated around forty percent truly have reliable internet.
We actually did that survey.
Yeah, I was going to... I mean, I don't want to...
Yeah, Jamie, please.
We got to about, when we said reliable, where you could Zoom or have something that would sustain like enough bandwidth to really work, was about a third. It was around thirty percent. So the second grade class, two of ten, that's not surprising.
So with what we've put into place now, since we discovered all this, there's options for outreach, too, and places for these parents to engage in downloading that information, either through a CHIRP site. Skyline SkyBest has been an excellent partner, especially down in that area of the county, where I think connectivity is probably the least, as providing us these remote sites for parents to go to to download or access the school's information. Am I still correct?
Yeah, that's... And I don't... Yeah. I know that the teachers were making specific efforts to teach the kids how to download everything before they leave. But with a snow day, you don't get to plan that as well, so that's a challenge. But there is partnerships with trying to develop some hotspots. We know that the bad thing is that you, to have a hotspot, you have to have a signal coming to the hotspot, and that's a challenge in that area as well. I think we tried to do that some in Dennis's previous life.
I will say that Ms. Lee, we have been talking about this, because even though it's great to have hotspot areas, a lot of the families aren't able to really just travel to those areas, even though you'd like for them to be able to, and they're available. So Ms. Lee had come up with just downloading. We talked about finding books ahead of time and just planning out several books that she was going to teach in the future and going ahead and pre-downloading those onto the iPads. And so she had done that this past time. So a lot of them already had some activities and stuff pre-downloaded on their iPads. And then we'd even thrown out the possibility of, if this was to be extended, the parents could bring their iPad to build them. Ms. Lee could go out, download it for them, and put it on there. I mean, when you're talking first grade, there's a lot of... I mean, there's going to have to be a lot of guided, direct instruction for that, and the teacher's going to have to do a lot of that pre-downloading and front-loading as far as being prepared.
So knowing that if the district were to reach a point that we respond to the increased COVID cases and went for an extended time, the teachers are better prepared now to proactively reach out to make sure those resources are available, either through the standalone iPads or through USB drives or something?
Definitely. And I think, too, we sent home a flow chart that was made by Nancy Carter that kind of outlined what parents' options were for remote learning. And honestly, some parents would just prefer the paper because it... That's what they're comfortable with, and if they're trying to teach through this, they're having a hard time understanding. So we gave them the option of, there were three options. One, you can use the iPad solely to submit work and access all your information. One, you can use the iPad solely to submit work and access all your information. Two, you can use the iPad some but still have a paper packet. Or the third is just straight paper packet because they have no internet access. And so the parents have been sending those back to us just so that the teachers are aware of what method best meets that family's needs.
And communications and that contact with that child in that home during the remote day is critical. Are we pretty confident that we can maintain that level of communications each day, especially with that group of struggling kids?
I believe so. We even have, we made a school, I made a school of contact log and put each grade level at the bottom of the Google sheet. And that way, if Mr. Bo or if Ms. Debbie or whoever is contacting those kids, we can see a list of who contacted this kid, what was the form of contact, and then any additional notes beside it. And so our plan originally was if we're extended, then I can send a list of names or the teachers can send a list of names to whoever they're paired with and say, I really need you to reach out to this kid. And then we have a way for everybody to see who's being contacted on one place.
Thank you. Right. Do you have kids that go to the same place? Like, do you have kids that go to the Y every Wednesday or somewhere like that that they have access or don't have access or?
Not to my knowledge. Do you?
It's the, it's the, to go to Newland from that area is, it's a hurdle. It's pretty far for that. We did have some when I was there the first, when we had to close down a couple of times. We had people that would come to the parking lot of the school sometimes, but not a lot, to be honest. And then I think the communication there, the teachers do such a good job there of communicating with their families and knowing their families that they do maintain an awareness of what their needs are. And if they, I mean, we do, if they need to have a paper, a paper copy, a hard copy sent, they try to make those proactive steps.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you all for your, again.
Yes, we appreciate that. Thank you. Please pass our thanks on to your staff too. Thank you all. Merry Christmas.
See you in the morning.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
We will move on to our 21st century systems and policies for first reading. Sixth, I think. Anything before we take those on, Dr. Bridgen? Either of those just kind of clearing up from the school board association?
That's right.
Okay. Next, we have our policies for second reading, which we will need to take action on.
Would you like for me to go through them just to recap?
If you would, at least.
Okay, the first one, A is the school's safety. This is verifying that we will enforce Department of Health and Human Services requirements related to COVID-19. It also puts a little sentence in there clarifying the bullying reporting requirements. Would you like for me to go through all of them and approve?
We'll prove them all.
Okay, all right. And then the next one, 3300, school calendar and time for learning. It also acknowledges our obligation to follow the school calendar laws this year. So none of the laws regarding the school calendar have been waived. We'll talk more about that when Mr. James does his calendar presentation here briefly in terms of addressing the hours of instruction for the remainder of this year beginning with second semester. So the next one is 4400, attendance. It clarifies the two methods of taking attendance. And I think Ms. Ben Garner alluded to that in one of the questions to the principals. How do we take attendance? And there's two methods of taking attendance. One is actually engaging in that direct Zoom instruction or completing the assignments required for that day. Again, nothing takes the place of in-class instruction. And I think Ms. Ruth alluded to it. Students miss out when they're out of school. So we've done well over this first semester trying to maintain in-class instruction. The third, the next one is D, it's 50/20 visitors in schools. The board has been proactive on this. And we've talked about restricting our campuses to outsiders and leaving it just to school personnel and students. And that's paid great dividends for us. This is, this has already been expedited in Avery County, but this policy aligns with DHSJ's requirements that we now have in place. The next one, same thing, community use of facilities. We've restricted third parties from coming in and using our facilities. And this policy is in accordance with the Department of Health and Human Services safety protocol. Schools are restricted for use by third parties during or after the school day or on weekends and any week in which the school is holding in-person instruction on campuses. And finally, for second reading, this is 6305, safety and student transportation services. It also acknowledges what we have already put into place in terms of the protocol for transporting students on our buses until further notice in accordance with the Department of Health and Human Services. And I recommend the board approve each of these policies as second reading.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Bridgen. Could I have a motion for approval of policies for second reading?
I make the motion that we approve these.
Thank you, Kathy. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All right, next we have our capital outlay maintenance updates. Mr. Jeff?
Good evening.
Good evening.
In your packet, you should have the capital outlay report same fashion that we've been using for the last several meetings. Nothing really new to update you with. We're kind of in a holding pattern when it comes to our capital outlay projects. The majority have been completed as planned. We do have a few that are outstanding that we're just working with our contractors to complete. And then the big one will be coming up as we get close to the end of the school year with replacing the storage tanks here at the bus garage. And then I've updated the maintenance request summary for you based on incoming requests for the month of November, outstanding requests. And the live, what we had was we closed the month of November. So things are still moving. We're still getting work done. Still, you know, facing challenges every day. Right now, the big thing is heat. Trying to make sure people are warm.
When you do do that about ground storage tanks, that'll be, that won't be your guys doing that, right?
No, there's an outside, yeah. We've got a local vendor that will be doing all of that work for us.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Any questions? Okay. Next, we move on to budget amendments.
All right. Well, I've had placed in your packet for tonight, budget amendment number two, which addresses Fund A, our restricted local fund. I'm accounting for several grants that have come in this year. A couple items of carryover that we needed to go ahead and incorporate into the budget. It will add $56,898.79 to our total budget. It will reduce the total amount of unallocated fund balance that we had to budget at the beginning of the year, $9,175. However, it does increase, well, it's a net change, actually. It's about two thou, oh, less than $2,000. So that's good news. We've received some additional funding that we weren't planning on receiving. Primarily, that came from Mainland Community College with our first semester FTE funding, $22,514. So that's a pretty good chunk of money that came in that is going to help offset some costs. Just to go through the list, North Carolina Arts Council, that's two grants that we've received this year, totaling $17,413. One at Bannerell, one at Cranberry Middle. We had $2,000 that was left over in the Cranberry Middle field trip fund from last year. I really don't think we'll be accessing those funds this year with what we're dealing with with COVID. But to keep from those funds getting away from us, I wanted to go ahead and reallocate them since they were last year's monies unspent. I wanted to get them in this year's budget so that when we get into next year, you know, the further away we get from unallocated funding, the easier it is to just forget about it. And I don't want Cranberry to lose that $2,000. And Crossnor had a little less than $2,000 remaining and a tutor grant that they've received from one of their local churches in their community. Again, we brought that money into the budget and they are actually spending that. We are having some tutoring take place. Riverside has received two grants for their Go Outside Classroom. One is $11,500. That's a new grant. It's actually being funded through COVID money. And then the $4,000 was money that they received in June. And actually, we budgeted it last year. We knew we would not be using it until this year, so we're bringing it forward. And those funds are actually ready to go out the door as we speak. And then again, with Mainland Community College, our first semester FTE funding is $22,514. So that, all of that will increase our Fund A budget to $1,038,502.31.
Thank you, Jeff. Could I have a motion for approval of the budget amendments as presented? Thank you, Jane. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion, questions? All in favor? Thank you. All right. And finally, we have our calendar update. Jeff, thank you for heading this up. And you've got a couple of proposals for us here.
So we wanted to bring you up to speed with where we are with the calendar committee. We did send out to a 12-member committee, 12 school-based members, the eight principals and then four individuals here at the district, information to fill out a calendar survey. The results of the survey are in your packet as of whenever Stephanie and I pulled it up to print it off. Obviously, it's an ongoing process. So I think that we do have a few people that have completed the survey since we printed off the information through your packet. Really hasn't changed the results. You know, the questions that we asked are fairly generic and repetitive year after year.
Can you tell me again, who is your calendar committee?
There is, each principal is to identify a parent representative and a staff representative.
So there's one parent and one staff on?
One parent and one staff from each school.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's fine, that's fine. And so, and then, so with, typically with the calendar committee, we'd actually have an in-face sit-down, go through, spend about an hour discussing the calendar law, go through the rules, the regulations, talk about current calendars, previous calendars, and then begin the process of talking about how would we like to develop a coming calendar. With COVID, we didn't have that capability. So we're doing it through email and asynchronous communication. We put together a Google form to collect the survey data. And again, you know, when you start going through the calendar, ultimately, it comes down to what, it used to be when do we want to start? That's pretty much been dictated to us now by the state. We can begin, the Monday closest to August 17th. We ask, how long do we want Christmas break to be? We ask, do we want exams to be completed before Christmas break? We talk about spring break. When does spring, when should spring break fall? Should it coincide with the Easter holiday, which is a resounding yes? We talk about when do we come back from spring break? And then ultimately, there's some questions in there about, do we want a parent-teacher conference day? Do you want one of those second semester? Excuse me. And holidays, how do we want to attribute the holidays? Because the way the state is set up, there's 11 holidays that are given to the state employees throughout the year. So we have to place those into the calendar. And by state law, the only one that has to occur on the day that it falls is Veterans Day. Every other holiday that occurs during the calendar can be taken at whatever time the district and the board deems appropriate. So based on that information, that's what we throw out there to the calendar committee. That's what we ask them to go begin speaking with their peers and their constituents and other parents to try to get a collection of information back to us as to what is the pulse of our community. That's it in a nutshell. Does that make sense? All right. So kind of going through that survey, just right quick. One of the other things that we've thrown out there the last couple of years is the discussion about the instructional day. You know, how long should students be in class? From first bell to end bell? And the way the instructional day is defined by the state is first bell to last bell minus lunch. Okay? And so what we asked was, should it be less than six hours? Should it be six hours to six hours and 15 minutes? Should it be more than six hours and 15 minutes? And at all three grade levels, elementary, middle, and high, it was a resounding six hours and 15 minutes to six hours and 30 minutes is what the majority believe the length of our school day should be. Now, the staff day is seven and a half. That's defined by our workday policy. We control the length of the school day and it varies school by school based on the community need. After that, we throw out a question about should there be an equitable balance of days each semester? Basically, the old rule was 180 days of school, 90 first semester, 90 the second semester. And we still ask that question. Should there be a balance between the number of days, first semester and second semester? Eight of 60, well, yeah, 63% say yes. There should be. Logical thought. But then we come down, we ask a follow-up question. Should first semester exams always be before Christmas break? Regardless of the number of instructional days completed? 100% of the respondents say yes. So the problem you run into, and I'm sorry, my mask keeps falling. The problem you run into, you can't have both ways. There is, because of where the state requires us to start school, we can't have, it's 185 days of school. You can't have 92 or 93 days first semester and 92 or 93 days second semester and get exams in before Christmas because there's not enough days to complete it. So you either have to have an inequitable balance of days or you wait until after Christmas break to have exams. And the purpose of getting that question out there is to educate people. And the committee can then begin talk and explain to people, why is it sometimes we look at having exams after Christmas? And it's not that we want to. It's just we begin that discussion of what is best for instruction and what is best for children. And so it's an educational process as well. Now, I'm a teacher at heart, so. Then we ask about, should the parent conference be a whole day? The majority of people say yes. Should there be a parent conference second semester? We traditionally do not have parent conferences second semester because of inclement weather. But we asked the question, do people want to see a parent conference second semester? And 88% of the people answered yes. Should Christmas week or break always be two full weeks? And I don't know where this came from, but for some reason, it's taboo if you say it's not. And that's okay. So 75% of the respondents say yes, we need two full weeks off at Christmas. When should Christmas break begin? The majority believe December 20th. We should return on January the 4th. And then the question about holidays, should they occur as they fall on the calendar? Or should we use them to help offset inclement weather days? And that is split 50/50. Half I believe we need to take it when it occurs, half say, well, let's save those for when we really need them. So that's where we are with the committee as it stands right now. As far as comments, there's really, there really weren't a lot of comments. I actually emailed everybody yesterday morning just to verify to say, you know, if you have any comments, we're going to be presenting tomorrow night, beginning of the discussion with the board. I'd love to take any comments to the board. The only comment that was made was that it was said that we would really like to strive to get the children out of school before June. That is someone's comment. You know, and in a wonderful year of weather, that's everybody's goal. And we'd love to see that. But we're not in control of the weather and sometimes we can't make that a reality. But we do the best. but we do the best that we can to try to get kids out as close to the first of June as possible as we develop a calendar. Now, to give you something to begin to cut your teeth off, I provided you with two sample draft calendars of what the school year could look like next year. Again, you know, when you start digging into this, we don't have a lot of liberty and leeway with some of the items that fall on the calendar, but we do have some control, and I wanted to provide you with something to begin looking at and hopefully give you the ability to begin to also formulate questions. And, and I'm just trying to find mine in my stack here. Just to give you a, just a quick rundown and walk the differences between A and B. Draft A takes the school year as we normally would. We start August sixteenth, Monday closest to seventeenth. That's the first legal day that we can start. We go through Labor Day as a holiday. We have a day planned in September for homecoming. Let's hope that we can do that. We get into October, and that's where our parent conference day would be. We hit November, we have to take Veterans Day. I believe it became apparent this year. We attempted to have a remote day, the day before Thanksgiving, just to try to save that instructional time, and it just, it's not going to work. It's, it's going to be very challenging to try to make the day before Thanksgiving an instructional day. So, we're back to the way we used to schedule with a vacation day prior to that Thanksgiving holiday. And then, taking the semester up through December the twenty-second to give us as many instructional days as possible that first semester. However, you go back to what the committee's respondents were, they would like to see Christmas break begin December twentieth. So that would take us from eighty-seven instructional days, we would lose three, and we'd have an eighty-fourth day first semester if we adhered to that. And then, Draft B, I did back it up one day, from the twenty-second to the twenty-first, to accommodate two full weeks of Christmas break. Because we would get out on a Tuesday, we would go back on a Tuesday. Does that make sense? And then, running through second semester, the only difference between the two calendars is in March, you'll see a required workday for a parent conference, since the majority of the respondents did say they'd like to see a second semester parent conference day. It is difficult to do that, to adhere to it because of the weather and trying to figure out how do we manage? And it keeps, it's a floating day, it keeps moving, it gets later and later as we miss more and more days in January and February. But, just to show what it would look like, I went ahead and dropped one in March. And then, the other thing to keep in mind, everything that we're dealing with presently in the 2021 calendar is a one-year change. And unless the General Assembly adopts additional law, everything for 21, 22 goes back to old hat. So we're back to a hundred and eighty-five-day calendar. We're back to a thousand and twenty-five minimum hours of instruction. We're back to no remote days.
That's an or, not an and, right?
It is an or, it's a hundred and eighty-five days or a thousand and twenty-five hours. And no remote days. Okay? So unless they change the law, we're back to our old habit. So, and as Ms. Baumgartner pointed out, yes, the law is hours or days. So I have identified if we maintain, and I believe I went with a six-hour calendar, and forgive me for not knowing off the top of my head now, I went through about five iterations of this, and I believe it was a six-hour calendar. But I've highlighted in purple when the thousand and twenty-five, one thousand and twenty-fifth hour would occur versus when would the hundred and eighty-fifth day occur. And so that is a decision that we must tackle. Are we going to schedule a calendar based on a minimum number of hours? Are we going to develop a calendar or approve a calendar based on a minimum number of days? Or do we do a combination of the two? Okay?
Well, the days drive it and the hours follow. Give us something.
Yeah, and that's typically the way we've always designated our calendars. We do designate the days and the hours follow that, and then that provides us with some opportunity for inclement weather. And that is their saving grace with the new calendar law. Because when they reduce the number of working days, we lost five snow days with that legislation. So, you know, and, you know, if you'll recall back years ago when we had our school calendars, we had all of these colored days at the end. But then we also had that deal, well, we're now, you know, Avery County Schools is closed, and the last day of school is now. And we had that whole juggling act of trying to remember, well, now, what's the last day now? What's the last day now? The, the new legislation kind of took away a lot of that ambiguity, but what it also did is, we now only have three, four, maybe five days at the end of the year that we can play with. So having that hour flexibility does give us some resolve when it comes to our inclement weather and not having to go so deep into June. All right, so that's where we are presently with an upcoming calendar. And I'm, I'm welcome to any questions, I'm welcome to any direction. However, the board, you know, whatever your pleasure is.
I do, I have one question. So, what you just said, I just want to make sure in my mind. So this year, we're using, instead of snow days, we call them a remote day. So you're saying that unless they change the law for next year, we're, we're back to where we used to be? So, so that, this won't be an option next year unless something happens in Raleigh?
Exactly.
Okay.
The, the, the way the present law is written, the remote day option is only a 2021 calendar law availability.
Okay, thank you. We need to talk to our legislature.
Is that include our remote for COVID? Or, I mean, any remote days?
Yeah.
For next year, yes.
Yeah, right, yeah, that'll, that'll change everything.
Well, and, and the other thing is, I really, at the beginning of next year, or if we need, I really want us to have at least a couple or three snow days for the kids. Because I've been asked over and over, I mean, that's some of the sweetest times you ever remembers when your kids come in, your house is ready for eight hours. But seriously, let's, let's really put that in, you know, to it being a thought. I'm doing it.
And I feel certain second semester, we'll see some snow days too. Because there'll be a point in time where the weather's so bad, we shouldn't expect teachers to even try to get to work or try to access computers or something, stay warm, fed.
Include parking lots.
Right.
There's a lot of, a lot of moving parts with inclement weather that we have to take into account. And, you know, remote day is a great option, but it's not the only option that we need to consider.
Any other questions for Jeff?
We'll be prepared in January, the board meeting in January to present it for approval. Did, did Ms. Patton have a question? Pat, did you have a question?
I don't know, I, well, what, what, the two schools that are the shortest days? Is that Banner Elk and Riverside?
None of them.
Avery Middle and Newland?
I think it's Banner Elk and Newland.
Hold on, I've, I've got it.
Here, I've got it right here.
Now, we're transitioning to talk about this present calendar year, right? That's what we're talking about, yeah.
All right, presently, presently, I know, Newland Elementary has the shortest instructional day with three hundred and twenty minutes. And then, they are followed by Freedom Trail, Cranberry, and Banner Elk with three hundred and thirty minutes of instruction.
So our calendar's based on the length of the day at Newland Elementary?
Yes, presently, at five hours, five point three three.
So, we're going to have to address that second semester to ensure that we meet the thousand twenty-five hours. The days, I think, are going to be okay, but what we have now going into the winter months, and Jeffrey, forgive me, I'm stealing you.
Oh, please, please go.
He was prepared to talk about this too. He and I have talked about it, and when they announced a couple of weeks ago from DPI that the calendar laws are not going to be waived in any form or fashion, Jeffrey went back and did this calculation per school. So we, we have a couple of schools we're wanting to bump, bump up slightly. So that was the plan for us tomorrow with the administration, is to show them this breakdown and how many minutes these schools are going to have to add. And Jeffrey, I think you've got that piece of information to share with the board.
I do. So presently, at three hundred and twenty minutes for the instructional day, we have to go with whoever's the shortest when we report back to the state. So, if we do not alter the length of our student day when we come back from Christmas break, we will not meet the thousand twenty-five hours with our present calendar. We will have to add some time in there. Now, as it stands right now, the present calendar has us with a end date, a face-to-face end date of May twentieth. Based on my calculations, if we move to a six-hour and fifteen-minute day, which means Newland Elementary will have to add approximately fifty-five minutes to their day, they're the law, they'd have the most because they have the shortest day. The high school has the least to add at twenty minutes because they have the longest day of our schools. And then everybody kind of falls in the range in between twenty to fifty. We come back January the fourth with the, or the, January the fifth, with the length of the day, we will need to extend our school year from May twentieth to May twenty-seventh to adhere to the calendar law.
And that's if we don't miss any days?
Yes. That is if we, and that is because the way the law reads this year, and this year only, you have to have a hundred and ninety days of school. We have a hundred and seventy-nine presently. Okay? So, that's an X right there that we have to deal with. Or, and again, the or is in there, or a thousand and twenty-five hours plus five days. So what we've got to do, we've got to get back to the thousand and twenty-five hour mark and then add five days. Thousand and twenty-five hour mark is May twentieth.
Okay, I have a question. How come we didn't lengthen that day at the beginning so that it was consistent all the way through instead of going back and changing it in the middle of the year?
We, we thought that there was going to be double bus runs, but turned out we didn't have that.
The length, the length of our school day was shortened at the beginning of the year due to the face masks, the transportation issues, trying to, trying to accommodate everything that we could with social distancing and the, the whole gamut of what COVID has dealt with us.
Okay, so if we start in January, are we ready to fix that?
That's what we're...
That's what I meant, we are ready.
Yeah, we are ready, and the thing is, is if we don't address it now, every day that we wait is time that we lose. And we, we need to get on it as quick as we can coming back from Christmas so that at the end of the year, we can check the box that we had our minimum time. And we went the additional five days that the state requires. You know, remote days are still out there. The social distancing that we're having to deal with is still out there. The possibility of Plan C from the governor is still looming over us. However, what we've been told by the state is that the General Assembly will not waver at this present moment from the law that they have already established, even though we have executive orders out there that have altered our days, altered our method of instruction, altered how we operate as a district. So, in going through the metrics, you know, that's a popular word right now, but in going through the metrics, this is what I see. So if we just make a small adjustment at the majority of our schools, again, Newland's the one that's going to have the greatest impact because they have the shortest day. But still, what we're presenting or what we're needing to do doesn't take us back to where we used to be with a six and a half hour, six hour and forty-five minute instructional day at some of our schools. We're still going to have a truncated instructional day from what we've had in the past. So we're just going to add some time beginning January the fifth, and we'll be able to move forward. The only difference is because of how the face-to-face, or the hours plus five days, that's the, that's the kicker this year, that's what's going to be different. So we, May twentieth was our scheduled last day. Well, May twentieth would be when we would meet the minimum hours. And then we just have to go five additional days to meet the law this year because they want everybody to go an additional five days from what they have in the past. One time deal, it change, it goes away unless the General Assembly does something really weird when they come back to session.
You know, the interesting little caveat to this is we have systems out there on Plan C and fully remote, so we could assume a lot with the days. The hardship with our end-class instruction is we document the time they're with us. With the remote days, we claim six and a half hours per day, am I right, six fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, so...
So even though we, so because that's our longest school day, how do we, how do we claim that? We just do?
We just do.
It's a day of instruction. And the other thing I want to note is the high school is at the point, we need to start looking at graduation dates, and they're tossing around the twenty-ninth of, am I right? The nineteenth of May, can I say it? That's Saturday, so that's, that's after the last student day and pretty much with some workdays remaining in the school year. And I wanted to throw that out because I think Ricky had shared that with Jeff and me as well, and I wanted to make sure that everything seemed to be okay, if they were to go ahead and put that to stone.
I think we have to.
Yes.
But what does that, that, that takes away any of your snow days then? That means they all have to be remote?
No, because, does that take away our snow day?
It, it does not.
Okay, I was just asking, thank you.
What we would have is one, two, six. We'd have six, the availability, we'd have the availability of six.
Okay, thank you.
Non-remote days. Yeah, six non-remote days.
Plus all of our remote opportunities. And that, that's why we, we've tried to call these days for inclement weather remote learning so we can maintain our hours of instruction.
But the, the one, the tricky piece with the non-remote snow days is we don't have as much luxury as we have in the past with hours. So, you know, it might go back to a situation where we close today, we have to make this day up later at the end of May first to June. Because we'll have to monitor and make sure that when we get to the end, we have met the minimum hours so that when the state comes calling, we can answer. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you all. And y'all, I know it's clear as mud, and I know it's confusing. You know, everything this year's across three different state laws now, so it's, it is very confusing. But if you have questions, you know, reach out to me, and I'll be glad to tell you what I think I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I think we've covered everything.
I think we covered it.
Okay. With that, and Jamie, we're going to amend the consent agenda. That was actually passed by poll, so that, we don't even have to vote on that. I mean, we can if y'all want to, we'll do that anyway. Okay. I just remembered and saw that on. Could I have a motion for approval of tonight's consent agenda?
I make the motion.
Thank you, Kathy, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And with that, do we have any board member need to say anything?
So, you don't have to vote on that other item separately?
No, it, it was, uh, it's already voted on.
Okay, thank you.
Prior to, uh, which I didn't participate in.
Thank you.
With that, then, Luke from Avery County, thank you, Mark, for being here. We appreciate that. Uh, I'd like to wish everybody that's on, still online with us a very Merry Christmas and our whole school's, uh, family and county. We hope you have a safe and blessed Christmas. Thank you all for participating with us.